Please note that Counselor Bond and Counselor Gamroth are attending the meeting virtually. Chair to entertain a motion to by minute action, excuse the absence of the Vice Mayor. Moved by Counselor Sweeney, seconded by Counselor Haskins, please cast your vote. Yeah, the TVs. I don't know.
Are you gonna call for their vote?
Yeah, sorry. Counselor Bond, Counselor Gamroth, how do you guys vote?
In the affirmative.
Thank you. Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please read the consent minute approval titles.
Approving the minutes of the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting and the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five executive session.
Thank you. The chair to entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read. Moved by Counselor Haskins, seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. Counselor Bond and Counselor Gamroth, how do you vote?
Can you see the thumbs up when we do it, or do we?
No, you're gonna have to do verbally.
Aye, aye.
Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. The chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action. The June third, twenty twenty-five bills and claims is audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Pollock, seconded by Counselor Haskins. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. Counselor Bond and Counselor Gamroth.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
The chair to entertain a motion to approve by minute action, the June third, twenty twenty-five conflict claim is audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Pollock, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. Counselor Bond, Counselor Gamroth.
Aye.
Aye.
I guess that's okay. The Vice Mayor isn't here. Okay, perfect. Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Now is the time that we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. The portion of this, of the portion of this meet, of this part of the meeting is dedicated to the public to allow them time to discuss matters of public interest and to voice their concerns. We do ask that you please state your name, direct all questions to the mayor. No personal obscenities or threats will be tolerated, and council will not respond to personnel matters. These will all be referred to our city manager. Counselors may ask clarifying questions, but if they choose to respond to matters, they will do so during the scheduled council response time following communications from persons present. Presentations will be limited to five minutes and no time extensions will be allowed. Please note that all the public hearings and ordinances each have their own separate comment periods. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. I am disappointed, but I'm not deterred. I come before you many times with questions, concerns, and suggestions. Recently, I am experiencing what I hear from, from some is pushback, derision, and misrepresentation of some of the things that I've said. Your last public meeting was a prime example. I raised concerns about the ice arena expansion, and I was not clear from other meetings what the deadline is for the ice hockey club to raise enough money to match the three point two million dollars that the city has been holding. And now that is clear. I got pushed back that, well, here in Wyoming, we honor our commitments, and I keep bringing up the same thing. Well, obviously, I didn't have an answer. So I wanted to get a copy of the agreement and found out there is no agreement. There's no contract. Contract stipulates terms between the parties, what the responsibilities are. Now, I don't know what legally, how you, you do that. It's not my area, and I didn't have time to look at Title sixteen. But that is a concern. And just because I raised the same issue and don't have an answer, that's, that's something that I should be able to ask until I get the answer. I also mentioned the fact that last year, when council approved putting eight questions on the ballot to raise our sales tax, many people were complaining and concerned that we were told that there was no money in the budget for those special projects. But when those special projects, some of them were not approved and some were, then there's still an effort to fund those projects. Now, council has a right to do that. You are the elected officials. You can move money around as you see fit, as long as you don't violate any kind of statutes. I also raised the question about the priority budgeting questionnaire. I did not say that city staff should not answer the question. They are citizens. They are as valuable as everybody else in their opinions do count. My concern was that when I went to, to do the survey myself and went through the search engine on the website, I could not find it. I did have a copy of the draft, and one of the recommendations I made on the employment statuses was done. This past week, I did try to take the survey. It's now right on the website so that we get a broad section of citizens answering the questions. The problem I had is I got to the first section and answer all the questions, so I tried to make comments. The reason I couldn't answer all the questions was the, the offering of the, of the answers were high priority, medium priority, low priority. There's no question, not a priority or not a responsibility of government. I tried to answer that, go to the next screen, couldn't go to the next screen. So that's a problem. I don't know if it can be fixed at this point. It's very obvious that the questionnaires are out there, and you can probably not change it. Finally, the, the more pushback I get, the more I'm encouraged to look into things, and I will continue to do my job as a citizen and make recommendations. I've made comments recognizing the value of the staff and the work of the council, but I am not immune to asking questions and expressing criticism when I feel that it's necessary. Thank you for your time.
Does anybody have any clarifying questions for Mr. Schrifman? Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right. But any of the counselors likely would like to briefly respond to the matters brought up for Mr. Schrifman?
I'm just gonna make real quick. We appreciate that you do come up here and we do question that. I will say that, and I think you will, you will agree that the city staff has been very open and working with you. I know that every time that you do ask, they're very welcoming to you and being able to do that. And so I want to acknowledge that our staff wants to work very closely at you as a citizen to be able to do that. So I want to recognize our staff, because I know the time and effort that the staff puts in to help you out, Mr. Schrifman. And, and as you know, being a citizen, I was on this other side before I ran for city council. And part of that is that, that it is your right to come to us and, and, and do those things. But we also know that we will push back on things that we believe are also misrepresented. And so that's one thing that, that you're right is to come and talk to us, but our right is also to clarify where we stand and the things that we do up here. So, thank you.
Please read the consent agenda titles.
Establish June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five as the public hearing date for consideration of an ordinance amending Casper Municipal Code Section twelve point two four point zero three zero, sidewalk obstructions prohibited, an ordinance amending Casper Municipal Code Section ten point twelve point zero three zero, driver's license restrictions, and a resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six budget.
Thank you. The chair to entertain a motion to by minute action, establish the public hearing dates just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Sweeney, seconded by Counselor Pollock. Oh, was it Counselor, was it you?
No, it was her.
Oh. Moved by Counselor Pollock, seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. Counselor Bond, Counselor Gamroth.
Aye.
Was that both? Yeah, okay. Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of an ordinance vacating Stoneridge additions, Block One Lot Park, Block One Lot Park. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
Thank you, Mayor. I do. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Liz Becker to Jay Carter Napier dated May twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Zip number two, Casper Star Tribune ad proof for publication on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, and May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
I do, Your Honor. Thank you. Members of the council pursuant to the work session that we had on the topic back in March, the proposed parkland as exhibited on your screens is being suggested as a subject of vacation in order to transition it to the private sector, which would be done contingent upon this passage tonight of a public bidding process wherein folks would have the opportunity to buy the parcel as you see it here on your screens. And we will do that as we would do any other bidding of property and in regards to the direction that statutes provide in this matter.
Thank you. Council now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the ordinance to please approach the lectern. Anybody wish to speak in favor? Okay, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to this ordinance to please approach the lectern. Anybody in opposition? There being no one to speak for or against the ordinance, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance vacating Stoneridge addition Block One Lot Park as dedicated public parkland.
The chair to entertain a motion to approve on first reading, the ordinance just read.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Haskins, seconded by Counselor Pollock. Any discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Counselor Bond, Counselor Gamroth.
Aye.
Please, please record the vote. Was that Kyle? You did, okay. Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Please read the ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change for lots thirty to thirty-one, South Garden Creek Acres Number Two Addition subdivision in the city of Casper, Wyoming.
Thank you. The chair to entertain a motion to approve on second reading, the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Pollock, seconded by Counselor Haskins. Council will now listen to public comment. Does anybody wish to speak to the second reading of this ordinance? Okay, any discussion? Any amendments? What's going on here? Please cast your vote. Counselor Bond, Counselor Gamroth.
Aye. Aye.
Also aye.
Oh, please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Officer Tremble, could you maybe look into that? What's going on? No, I'm just kidding. Yeah, I'm just kidding, Jeremy. Sit down. Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty and amending chapter eight point zero four of the Casper Municipal Code regarding businesses affecting public health.
Chair to entertain a motion to approve and adopt on third reading, the ordinance just read. Moved by Counselor Haskins, seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Council will now listen to public comments. Anybody wish to speak? Any discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Counselor Bond, Counselor Gamroth.
Aye.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change for Lot One Tri-View Edition subdivision in the city of Casper, Wyoming.
Chair to entertain a motion to approve and adopt on third reading, the ordinance just read.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Haskins, seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Council will now listen to public comments. Anybody wish to speak to this? Any discussion? Amendments? Please cast your vote. Counselor Bond, Counselor Gamroth.
Aye.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
You want to take a recess, or are we good? I'm sorry. All right, let's take a five-minute recess, everyone.
What's going on?
Must be a commotion outside or something like that.
Did you notice there's an executive session tonight on the agenda?
Uh, yeah, I think it's legal in litigation. Apparently, I might have stolen again, so.
Or what? Oh.
Yeah, no private conversations online.
Items left. Counselor Bond, Counselor Gamroth, can you guys hear us okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, just help me get back on track here, Amanda.
We're on nine C.
Nine C, thank you. Okay, we're on nine C, third reading ordinance. Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance ratifying all actions previously taken concerning city of Casper, Wyoming, local assessment district number one fifty-nine, confirming the proceedings, assessment role and assessment therefore, assessing the amounts in said role on the property in said district, creating a lien therefore and prescribing the priority therefore, directing the certification of said role by the city clerk and transmittal thereof to the city treasurer, prescribing notice that said assessment shall be paid and the terms thereof, providing for the payment of said assessment, creating a special and a separate fund therefore, providing for the collection of delinquent assessments and prescribing various details concerning said provisions.
Thank you. The chair to entertain a motion to approve and adopt on the third reading, the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Pollock, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Council will now listen to public comment. Anybody wish to speak to this? Any discussion from the council? Please cast your vote. Counselor Gamroth, Counselor Bond?
Aye.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance creating city of Casper, Wyoming, local assessment district number one sixty-one, hereafter called the district ordering the construction of improvements therein, describing the same, directing the preparation of plans and specifications therefore, providing for the publication of notice to contractors fixing the boundaries of said district, ratifying action previously taken and prescribing details in connection with said district.
Thank you. The chair to entertain a motion to approve and adopt. Did I already say that? No. I'm just lost. Chair to entertain a motion to approve and adopt on third reading, the ordinance just read. Moved by Counselor Haskins, seconded by Counselor Jensen. Council will now listen to public comments. Any discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. Counselor Gamroth, Counselor Bond?
Aye.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Council will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Ten A one, authorizing a contract for outside city sewer services with Larry D. and Nicole A. Castleman. Ten A two, authorizing a contract for professional services with HDR Engineering Incorporated to develop a landfill diversion business plan. Ten A three, authorizing amendment number two to the Public Safety Advisory Committee Agreement between the city of Casper and Wyoming Medical Center Incorporated. Ten A four, authorizing an agreement with Pope Construction Incorporated for the solid waste facility refuse collection container building procurement project. Ten A five, authorizing an agreement between the city of Casper and Complete Casper for funding to host Wyoming High School tournaments in Casper from twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty. Ten A six, supporting the submission of an application to the Wyoming Business Council under the Business Ready Community Grant and Loan Program for a business committed project. And ten A seven, authorizing amendment number one to the Casper Area Metropolitan Planning Organization and Eagle View, Eagle View contract for professional services for the twenty twenty-five high resolution imagery, LIDAR, and elevation flight campaign.
Thank you. The chair to entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda items just read.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Pollock, seconded by Counselor Haskins. Mr. City Manager, do you have any comments on any of these items? Any abstentions or nay votes? Yes, Counselor Larson.
I'd like to vote no on ten A six.
Okay, any other nays? Okay, please cast your vote. Counselor Gamroth, Counselor Bond?
Aye.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With Counselor Larson's nay vote noted and on all others voting aye, the motion passes.
Please read the consent minute action titles.
Eleven A one, authorizing the reappointment of Ronald Shosh Junior as the architect to the Old Yellowstone District Architectural Design Review Committee for a three-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Eleven A two, authorizing the reappointment of Michelle Schwan to a two-year term and the reappointment of Kelly Ivanoff and Philip Rail, an appointment of Rachel Mondle to one-year terms on the Old Yellowstone District Advisory Committee. And eleven A three, authorizing the inclusion of fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six summary proposed budget into the minutes of the June third, twenty twenty-five regular council meeting.
Thank you. Chair to entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action items just read.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Pollock, seconded by Counselor Haskins. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. Counselor Gamroth, Counselor Bond?
Aye.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all counselors voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. Now is the time that we do ask counselors to come forward, to bring forward any relevant concerns or items of interest. I'm gonna go ahead and start with those that are on video conference with us. So Counselor Bond, do you have anything you'd like to share with us tonight?
I don't, Mayor. Thank you.
You bet. Counselor Gamroth, do you have anything you'd like to share tonight?
I do. A couple things, please. So we had a Metro Animal Shelter Task Force meeting. It was Wednesday before last. We didn't, I didn't give this update last week because we had a long budget meeting, and so this is my save, my holdovers. So the last Metro Animal Shelter meeting we had, Jody, our shelter manager, gave an update on our current TNR activities. We are working with Community TNR, which is a local volunteer group, and also kittens with mittens. I made an Always Sunny in Philadelphia joke, and nobody in the room got it, so I'll have to pass along that clip so that they get it for future reference. We discussed creating a cat colony at the shelter to help with pest and rodent control. Second Chance Cat Rescue and Shearden also has a colony at their shelter, and this is for cats that can't be placed at barns to act as working cats and would otherwise be euthanized. So it's a way to essentially avoid euthanization, help with some pest control, and, you know, get the animals spayed and neutered. They had recently adopted out eight animals at some in-house adoption events. They had a Petco Love Event in June. Oh, I'm sorry, that one is upcoming, so I think here in a couple weeks, I'll be back at Petco having an adoption event. Paws in the Fields Challenge with best friends to get animals returned before they come back to the shelter. back to the shelter, believe that was successful. Oh, sorry, Paws in the Field gave a donation of microchip readers, so, you know, it's nice equipment that isn't cheap often and so appreciate that donation. We discussed the merits of rebranding the shelter in alignment with the construction of the new one and it sounds like everyone in that group is on board with that and so, you know, just making sure that the name and the imagery reflects kind of the new culture and the new facilities that we'll have up there and so my guess is there'll be future updates in that regard as far as what level of input we or the community will have in that effort. The Downtown Development Authority announced that they hired Melissa Huggett as our executive director. Thursday was last week and a few other members of the board and myself at lunch with her to fill her in on priorities, to line out efforts over the next year. The first of which, in my opinion, will be the commercial property owner mill levy special election that will take place this year and that provides all the funding for the organization. Last time it passed around with ninety percent approval, but considering the fact that the existence of the DDA is pretty much tied to the outcome of that election, that would be my main priority for her to be working on this year. In addition to some other priorities like gathering feedback from downtown constituents, merchants and owners, acting as an ambassador for them, not only in front of us as council, but also in meetings like the homelessness coalition since a lot of that activity centered in the district, also giving us input on things that affect those stakeholders downtown like development, open container ordinance and others. And then lastly, we had a homelessness coalition task force meeting last Wednesday. We still have not received our point in time counts results unfortunately. Kelly and her team were unable to make it to this meeting as well, but I believe they're on our agenda in the near future, so hopefully we will be able to assess and kind of go over the most recent point in time report. I think I've reported to this group in the past, but if so, a reminder, only six of our twenty-three counties in the state conducted a point in time count this year and that's really unfortunate because that lack of data not only skews, you know, it skews the data for our state. We don't know actually how many people we have living in that situation and we miss a lot of important data points, which again disappointing if we want to carry out an evidence-based strategy on the statewide level to prevent mitigate homelessness, but it also forces counties who do participate and are carrying out that work. In my opinion, they're receiving those resources as a result of that work and then they are kind of being forced to be the primary service providers for the entire state and so I would ask our group in whatever capacity we're able to to lobby throughout this interim session that our other counties really need to step up and start participating in that count, not only so that we as a state have a really good idea about what, you know, the scope of the problem, but also to ensure that we're getting the proportionate amount of federal resources to help tackle the problem. So that's all I have, thank you very much.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Haskins?
Thank you.
Counselor Sweeney? You're looking at confusion, Pat, or excuse me, Counselor.
Well, I, so I've got quite a bit. And so on the twenty-first of May, a few of us attended the YMCA function in, at the Y. I thought that was a great event and really emphasizes how valuable the Y and all of our nonprofits are to our community. On the twenty-first and twenty-second, but mostly the twenty-second, myself and the vice mayor were at minerals and I spoke in favor of, the discussion was around nuclear was really very educational, at least for myself, on the nuclear regulatory Western District member was there to discuss a number of different topics around nuclear and the regulatory process and all of that. Radiant gave a short presentation. There were a lot of, lot of good discussions and I spoke in favor of the radiant application as was, there was a question that came up, what, what we were hearing from, at least my perception was my constituents and I have not heard any negative. And then the question from the chairman was asked, you know, what the position of the city of Casper, so I asked the vice mayor to come up and verify that we were working on resolution as is done tonight. I'd just like to remind folks that there's our, a number of these committee meetings are happening in Casper at the Thira Thompson State Office Building up on the third floor and you can find that information on wyoledge, W Y O L E G dot gov. Also on the twenty-second, the Iris Clubhouse, which you all received invitations, was kind of a walkthrough and appreciate the city attorney being there and Rebecca Reeves, the has taken another position, but will still be around to help with different things at the clubhouse and the new, new executive director over there is Grace Philkins, who's already started and I think it'll be a great transition. Also on the twenty-second, attended town hall meeting about radiant out at Barnum and I thought that that was a very good town hall. Twenty-sixth, I attended the Memorial Day Service at Oregon Trail Veteran, State Veteran Cemetery. As usual, it was well-attended and a very moving program. On the twenty-seventh, we had the Visit Casper Board Meeting and so that went well. Again, today we had our budget, budget hearing at three-thirty and received, there was no public comment, but so the, the next year's budget and amendments were made. On the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, Education Committee was also at Thira Thompson and I didn't attend, but watched online. Twenty-ninth, NCH graduation, go Mustangs and our good city manager had a graduate and I also had a great goddaughter graduate and so, and I, I think Kelly Walsh's graduation was a record high and so hopefully in Roosevelt, I think was, I can't remember, it was thirty-some and Midwest, I think had sixteen or eighteen, so a good, good number of graduates from our, from our high schools. On the thirtieth, School Facilities was also at Thira Thompson and I traveled to Laramie for a funeral for Scott Talbot, a Casper resident that was our second longest director of game and fish and great guy in pancreatic cancer, got him at sixty-three. June second, Community Health Assessment, which I attended a meeting yesterday at, at the medical center about the community health assessment, which I believe people can still take online and gave input there and, and I handed those fact sheets out that were handed out on what Banner Health and the Medical Center has actually done for the community in year-end performance in twenty twenty-four, which is pretty remarkable for all the naysayers out there. On this morning, I had senior district meeting. They're coming along very well. Their budget hearing will be next month as prescribed by state statute. They're coming along very nicely and this afternoon, again, we had the budget hearing for Visit Casper. I would take note also that we lost, I think Lois Shikish was ninety-three or ninety-four, a long time. She was a tripping and a well-known person in the community for a number of years and also recently lost Tim Monroe, who I believe was a former council member. And so a couple of losses there. In further, at some, some point, I'd like to talk tonight, I believe county commissioners are taking up some weight limits and other things with Coats Road and I think a portion of that is the cities, especially the paved, paved portions is my understanding and I would like to kind of follow up, see what the county actually did do and propose that we look also at, at least a weight limit on that new pavement because I believe that was an assessment to the neighbors, but I'm not positive. So even though that's not my, my district, I have been approached by a number of those residents that are of concern on what the impact if that gravel pit moves forward will do to that pavement, so that's, that's it.
Thanks so much. Counselor Jensen?
All right. I have a couple things. Thanks, Pat, you didn't even mention Visit Casper's scorecard. Well, I think it's amazing. Anyway, I was leaving it to you since you attended that meeting, not me. I'm your alternate. So anyhow, I have a couple things. Last week, attended, we welcomed homes into Wyoming National Guard. I think it was like the three hundred, the second three-hundredth unit, I get those confused, so I apologize, but they were deployed, Wyoming National Guard soldiers that came home after a year of being deployed, so welcome home and thank you for your service. It was nice, it was Governor Gordon was there, Senator Barasso, it was the Honor Guard, it was a fantastic celebration and very heartfelt and heartwarming and all of the words and all the emotions to see them reunited with their families, so that was something special. I also want to remind people that CNFR is coming up and so get your tickets either at Ford Wyoming Center website and then also you can visit the cnfr.com website for their schedule of events. I believe Wednesday, I'm gonna double check this, but I think Wednesday of that week, which is June fifteenth through the twenty-first, is government day, so I believe that's when we all show up and get to be out there. I'm gonna verify that on Monday, though.
Thursday, Thursday, the nineteenth.
Is that the, okay, you did, sorry, thanks. Thursday, thanks, Pat. I'm just gonna verify that next week at our meeting because it's the last one before go time. So there is tons of events happening, not only at the Ford Wyoming Center, but also at the Sports Ranch, which is now going to be the mercantile and they have all kinds of like a party zone going on over there, they have kids' western camp, they have all kinds of events, so check out their schedule and get over there and participate, it's a good time for Casper. Little shout out to Mike Bond, happy birthday yesterday. And then I want to urge, this is kind of a PSA, I guess, for the police department as far as the victim service or victim service volunteers are needed. So in that department, many of you know that I'm an advocate for the victim services and so they, we are in desperate need for some more volunteers. I think we're down to four of us and maybe five, but that's, you know, when we're each covering a week a month, it's a lot, so we need some more volunteers and so they're actively recruiting, if you're interested in that, to help with domestic violence victims and civil service duties, please, I urge you to reach out to the Casper Police Department, Izera Leslie and the Domestic Violence Department and get going on that and there's a training and it's a pretty smooth process, but you can do your part to help stop domestic violence. That's what I got.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor Larson?
I don't have anything.
Last but not least, Counselor Pollock?
Thank you very much. Thanks, Counselor Gamroth, for covering the metro information, I don't have anything to add to that one. I have, just want to just, I know this is a topic of concern within the community, so I want to make folks aware that the next SLIB board meeting is Thursday, the fifth. It's not here, it's in Cheyenne. I've tracked down the agenda, it's not super clear that they may be talking about the prison logistics gravel leases again at that meeting, but I think there's some understanding that that may come up. You may have seen in the news that the meeting was requested to be moved here to Casper for that reason and was not, it will take place in Cheyenne, but they are offering public comment via, via Zoom and you do have to register in advance. I believe the meeting is eight to noon. Like I said, it's a little hard to see on the agenda where it might fall, so it may just be kind of the open comment period where people are expecting to speak, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but if that's something that you're looking to weigh into, in on, you keep an eye on that meeting and you can find the agenda online, the State Loan Investments Board. So yeah, I just wanted to put that on everybody's radar. Shoot, I had another thing. Well, I had something, oh yeah, I got, you may recall that Sheena Hickson from Mercer Family Resource Center approached us some time ago with concerns about, about ordinance change that we made to the tobacco offense fine and some concern that they've seen an uptick in, in underage folks being ticketed with that. I was hoping maybe we could get a memo to see if we can corroborate through the courts' numbers if we have vaccine an uptick since we've reduced the fine to twenty-five dollars. I don't know if it needs to go on a work session yet, but just would be interested to know if, if we're seeing a similar trend through the courts or if that's anecdotal coming through their services. And last, I, I should have done this right after the public comment, but I just wanted to prepare, get my thoughts together a little bit, but I did want to respond just briefly to Mr. Schriftman to, to at least provide some context for perhaps the pushback that I've been giving. So I, I think for the first several years of my term, four years maybe, I, I offered very little pushback to the positions that you take, even though I disagreed because I took them to be your opinions and I really believe that you have I took them to be your opinions, and I really believe that you have the right to come here and convey those publicly, and you don't need to hear my counteropinion every single time you state an opinion, and you want to offer that to us or to the public. But the increased pushback that I've been, that you've been getting now is the result of you positioning yourself as a source of information for the citizenry more broadly, so I feel that I need to treat that a little bit differently. I welcome your perspective just as I do for any citizen, and I understand it's your right to organize with other citizens and convey the information however you wish, but I do feel compelled to hold you to a higher standard in the way you represent the activities of the council during meetings due to these broader community undertakings. I believe it's my job as a councillor to advocate for quality information being deployed to the community, and if you're seeking to be a mouthpiece for that information, I believe it's my responsibility to be sure that I've done what I can to correct misinformation and provide relevant context and counteropinions. So if you've noticed a shift, I guess that's why, and, you know, I, I, I just wanted to provide that context to you, so hopefully that makes sense to you.
Thank you. I don't have anything tonight. The next meeting of the city council will be a work session to be held on Tuesday, June tenth at four thirty PM, and a regular council meeting to be held at six PM on Tuesday, June seventeenth. A notice of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have litigation and attorney-client privileged matters to discuss. The chair to entertain a motion to adjourn to an executive session, and at the conclusion of that executive session, to reconvene this regular meeting solely for purposes of adjournment of this regular meeting.
So moved.
Moved by councillor Pollack, seconded by councillor Haskins. There are a majority of councillors present, and a motion to adjourn to an executive session has been moved and seconded. This motion requires a two-thirds majority of the council present. Please cast your vote. Councillor Bond, councillor Gamroth?
Aye.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all councillors voting aye, the motion passes.
A greater than two-thirds majority of the council present voted in favor of the motion, and we are hereby adjourned.